Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to our virtual meeting for the Downtown Parking Committee for May 13th. Can we move to the roll call, please?
Ruben Zerate.
Here.
If each member could turn on their sound as they and their camera as they.
If I could jump in, Mindy, I think Ruben is participating from a mechanism that doesn't have camera right now, so we won't be able to see him when he turns on.
Okay. And France.
Good morning.
Here.
Matt Labrie.
Here.
Von Pratt. Absent. Andrew Newkirk.
Here.
Barbara Silver.
Here, here.
And Chair Penner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. That confirms that we have a quorum for this meeting. Do we have any requested changes to the agenda at this time?
Chair Penner, no changes to the agenda at this time.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item number four on our agenda, which is public comment. This is for comment in the jurisdiction of the Downtown Parking Committee, but is not currently on today's agenda. Members of the public can comment and have a two-minute opportunity to do so. Do we have any people listed to give public comment?
Okay, so if any members of the public wish to speak, go ahead and use the raise your hand button that you'll see on the next slide and use that to indicate your desire to speak. It doesn't look like we have anybody right now. And I also just want to take a moment to apologize. For some reason, my camera has stopped working today. It worked two minutes ago. It does not work now, so I'll try to get that resolved. But in the meantime, I apologize for being a talking black square, but no public comment at this time.
All right. Well, on two notes, thank you, and we'll close public comment. And Ms. Clark, well, we're sorry we can't see you. We do hear you, and hopefully that'll work out, but we'll get it squared away. Okay, we're going to move to number five on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of our meeting from April 8th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move approval.
Mr. Newkirk has provided a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Labrie. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the question or, in this case, the roll call, please.
Ruben Zerate.
Here.
I'm assuming that's an aye, Mr. Zerate.
Aye.
Thank you.
And France.
Aye.
Matt Labrie.
Approved.
Andrew Newkirk.
Yes.
Barbara Silver.
Yes.
And Chair Penner.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. All right. Onto the items of today, the agenda item six. It's our thank you for your camera being working again, Ms. Clark. Thank you. And I'm sorry my eyes are bounced. I'm having a different view than I usually have. Everyone's popping up in boxes all over, so I'm looking all over, so I apologize for that. So today we have an update on the budget and parking operations.
Thank you, Mr. Penner. So this is our usual monthly update on how we are, how we came out for April. So if you can go ahead and get to the next slide. So we'll start off by talking about the occupancy. As you can see, this year we are the orange line. So that is 2021. This is our average occupancy for April. You can see now we're comparing against in 2020, that blue line, a month when we were completely closed. So that's when we did not have any staff in the lots. That's when we were in full lockdown mode. So you'll see very low occupancies there, whereas the green line, which is from 2019, represents a more typical time. So we are improving a bit in this area. However, obviously, you can see that we are still considerably down from where we would be in a quote-unquote "normal" year. So now we'll talk about the revenue on the next slide. Revenue, again, obviously, this year we're the orange bar, and we are still off by about half of where we would be in a normal year. But it's better than last April, when we didn't have any revenue coming in, so that would have been the blue bar there. But things are starting to improve. And so if you want to move on to the next slide, we have some good news this month. For the first time since the beginning of the pandemic, we operated in the black for April of 2021. Now, there are a few factors that contributed to this and contributed to the improvement over last month. One of those being that this was a PBIA billing month. Remember, again, that assessment bills quarterly, so those revenues do fluctuate throughout the year. So we're in, for April, we're in sort of a high month. So this is the month where we get the highest receipts of that quarterly cycle. Next month, that's going to drop off a bit, and then the month following, it's going to be considerably lower. However, our PBIA receipts for this month, the high month, were about $20,000 more than they were the last quarterly billing. So we are starting to see those receipts improve, which speaks to the improvements of the businesses themselves and how trade is going downtown. So that is a bright spot, but perhaps the biggest bright spot is about $100,000 increase in our hourly revenues over last month. So that is down to the hard work of Roy Forni and his operations team, who've been very flexible and worked to staff up and to increase the hours that we're staffing out in the lots so that we can continue to collect more and more revenue. So as downtown is sort of on the comeback and things are opening up and restrictions are loosening, we are seeing those hourly revenues begin to recover. So that's great news. After we spent about $18,000 on capital this past month, so that does bring us a little bit into the red, but we only used about $3,000 of our reserves, which considering prior to that, we were averaging about $300,000 a month. That's great news. So we're very happy. We're hoping that this trend continues. Obviously, there are going to be month-to-month fluctuations, but, you know, for now, we are in much better shape than we've been in previous months. So if you'll move to the next slide, please. And so this is that graph that we've been tracking, and you can see that little red line, that operating net has finally peaked up above the zero mark, and we've got the revenues just exceeding the total expenditures. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. It is it is nice to start to see a little bit of that light at the end of the tunnel. I think we've seen that in the level of activity in downtown. There certainly has been with spring, good weather and travelers seeming to move about more and the vaccination program kind of being in full swing, it seems like. I guess I should say, anecdotally, I would have expected some of this benefit, this good news, because you certainly saw it around downtown, and that's good to actually see it translate onto dollars. So good to see that. Also, I guess with the PBI comment, I think last year, did we, we didn't do collection of PBI? Or was there a waiver, I think, of PBIA at some time?
We waived one quarter of PBIA fees, so there's one quarter that we did not collect at all. But we have been collecting for the FY21 fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, so I appreciate the sort of note of caution that the good news comes with making sure that it doesn't all fall onto the PBIA category. I don't have any further questions at this moment. Does anyone else at the committee have a comment or question?
I don't understand what PBIA means.
Okay, so maybe, so Barbara, we're going to be actually addressing PBI in an upcoming item, but I'll let Sarah give a quick comment on that, and then we'll move to Ms. Labrie.
Sure. So the PBIA, PBIA stands for Parking and Business Improvement Area. This is a long-running cooperative effort between the city and the businesses that are located in the downtown core. And what happens is, rather than all of these different businesses having their own separate parking requirement, like they would have under normal conditions, so that every little shop had to build its own parking lot, they kind of get together and they collectively fund a portion of our operating expenses. And so we'll talk about this, like Mr. Penner said, a little bit later. But basically, what happens is each business that's within a certain radius or a certain distance from our parking lot is assessed based on a formula that was developed pursuant to what's called an engineering report, which is a study that was done to observe, you know, how people walk downtown, how people used the parking facilities, and which businesses received benefits. So they're assessed according to the benefit that they would be received, that they would receive from the parking system, and then they pay into that quarterly. So we get those monies here in downtown parking, and that helps fund, helps offset the cost of operating the parking system and allows us to continue to offer competitive rates for.
Thank you. I do remember with some reference to that before. I just was caught by surprise when it came out. It's just initial. So thank you very much.
No problem. Typically, the PBIA funds about 11%. It makes up about 11% of our revenues. Obviously, everything's changed this year with the pandemic and how that's impacted the system. But typically, we receive about $1 million, and we'll talk more about that in the next item.
Great. Thank you for that, Mrs. Clark. Ms. Labrie.
I apologize. I don't have my agenda in front of me, and we may be talking about reserves as a separate item. If so, I can defer the question.
Go ahead and ask your question now.
So when we look at revenue and expenditures, I would love for us to see something on reserves at the same time. But my question is, and maybe this is a comment, Mr. Chair, for you and staff to think about later. Was recently in a meeting with the city manager, Paul Casey, said that we are citywide, you know, we've dramatically used a lot of our reserves. And I know we essentially kind of operate like a you know, an enterprise fund. We have our own reserve requirements, but that's also part of the city's reserve requirements when they tally up everything. And ultimately, my question is, it would be good for the committee and for the city to understand if we are fully self-insuring our assets, if there are general funds that also do that in conjunction with our reserve amounts. And if we were to have, you know, another disaster of an earthquake nature, and we had to rebuild our assets where we stand. So maybe for a future topic, kind of an update on our position, our reserve position.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Labrie. And I think what you might be alluding to is I know that there are funds that the city will be receiving, federal funds. And the question, I think, maybe Ms. Labrie is asking is how is the allocation of those being dealt with with reserves? I know that the goal is to sort of supplement the losses that came in last year's budget issue, so. So good question. And if, Ms. Clark, you have any thoughts on that at this point?
Sure. You know, Mr. Penner, to speak to what you alluded to with the federal funding that the city is set to receive, I believe that the city administrator's recommendation is that that will be used to backfill the reserves that the city as a whole has had to use in order to get through this crisis. How much of that may be allocated to downtown parking? We don't know at this point, if any. However, to get a bit to Mr. Labrie's question, or at least sort of what I was hearing, downtown parking does operate as an enterprise fund, but we are not a true enterprise fund. It's not like, for example, water or wastewater funds, where, you know, those fees that are collected from the ratepayer can only be used to fund those operations. So downtown parking fees, you know, even though we do operate sort of as an enterprise fund, we can be required to send some of those funds to the general fund, or we could receive money from the general fund. So, you know, it is something that is more in line with the rest of the city's reserves, where, you know, there is a possibility that there could be some backfill if council decided to do that of our revenues to make up for the revenues that we lost. Does that answer your question?
So I'm going to kind of respond to and ask Ms. Labrie is, I think, is your question or comment directed at the idea that we need to understand how, if any of those reserves would be coming from the general fund or coming from, directly from operations to build up our reserves?
Yeah, it's kind of an open-ended question from the standpoint of there are these state funds. There, we are operating like, but not truly an enterprise fund. We have our own reserve policy, which mirrors the city's. But are we, you know, to what degree do we need to watch out for what the city's general fund may or may not help us out with, I guess, is the, ultimately, the question is, do we need to kind of reconsider, you know, our reserve position and then communicate to council concerns about how we're going to backfill those funds. So I just don't know what is happening with state funds, and I don't think the city necessarily has announced anything. But how we, because we're a little bit like, you know, an adopted child, you know, as much as we, you know, we have some autonomy there, and so I just don't understand it. And I think it'd be good for, as information comes out, good for the committee to be briefed on how our reserve funds will be impacted by state funds or any future requirements from, you know, as far as our responsibilities to the general fund.
Sure. We can certainly schedule a topic for, you know, maybe the next meeting to discuss our reserve position in more detail. The Public Works Department is going to be presenting our budget to City Council on May 25th. And of course, City Council budget deliberations are coming up. That's the time at which those decisions about how those stimulus funds, that federal aid will be allocated across the city, whether it goes to, you know, backfill reserves, possibly some of our reserves. Again, we just don't know yet. That's something that the City Council will have to decide. Or whether it's used to fund different services. Again, that's a decision for them to make. So, you know, right now, I'm sorry, I don't have more information on that. But, you know, all we know is that we're getting, I believe it's about $11 million this year in federal money. And so, you know, we'll wait to see how that ends up being allocated.
And to clarify, Ms. Clark, your comment, the "we" means the city of Santa Barbara.
Means the city. Yes, the whole city, the city as a whole, not downtown parking.
All right. Are there any other members of the committee that have questions regarding this agenda item? Or comments? Okay, before we move on, oh, Mr. France.
Chair Penner, Ms. Clark, I'd just like to appreciate this glimmer of hope that we, even if it is, you know, a blip from PBIA, that we're starting to get out of the deficit spending that we've been in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment for this item. So if there's any members raising their hands of the public, Ms. Clark?
Okay, I don't see any raised hands right now.
Okay, we'll close public comment on this agenda item. And seeing no of the cameras or questions from the committee, we will move on to item number seven. That is the Parking and Business Improvement Area fee structure and recommendation to the council.
Thank you, Chair Penner. So this is an item that we bring before you every year. Legally, you are the advisory committee to the council on the Parking and Business Improvement Area. So we have submitted the draft report for your review and for council's review, and council is set to declare their intent to levy the assessment for fiscal year 2022 at their May 25th meeting. So our recommendation to you today would be that you accept the draft report and approve a status quo assessment for FY 2022. If you can, please move to the next slide. So just have one slide for you today. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of where we stand with the PBIA. You know, as I noted earlier, and we noted in the budget discussion, we are considerably off for PBIA revenues this year, just because the businesses that we assess have been largely closed. So for this year for PBIA revenue, you can see in an ordinary year back in FY 19, again, we brought in about $1 million in revenue. FY 20, that dropped down because we did waive a quarter for the businesses to give them some relief during the pandemic, so that went to about $750,000. For FY 21, we are only projecting that we're going to receive about $600,000 in PBIA revenue. Like I said, that does look like it's starting to recover, but we still have a ways to go. So for FY 22, we have budgeted to receive only about $750,000, expecting that the economic recovery downtown will continue, but that we're still not going to be fully back up to speed for FY 2022. So we use the PBIA revenues to offset, again, some of our operating costs. Specifically, we use it to cover a portion of our hourly salaries, so the salaries that go to pay the workers out in the kiosks, as well as in our office who help keep the system running, and our utility costs. So hourly salaries, obviously, that has changed substantially for this year and for next year as we move into a more automated model. Utilities, we have been able to realize some savings there by moving to more energy-efficient lighting. So those costs are down a bit as well from where they were back in FY 19. So that difference between the PBI revenue and the expenses that we use it for is shrinking a little bit. But again, those revenues are expected to be off for 2022. So that's all I have for you today. If anybody has any questions about the PBIA status quo assessment. You know, we had, as you're all aware, we had entered into a contract with Walker Consultants to update the engineer's report and update the assessment model that we use to assess these businesses. However, that was put on hold just given how much is changing right now with the closures related to the pandemic. So that remains on hold, and we're going forward with status quo for FY 22.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And just a note for members of the committee, you have the full PBIA draft report that is going to council in your package. So if you also can look at that, it gives you some more information as well. Mr. Newkirk, did you, ready for questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Penner. So just on that contract for the update to the assessment, is that money still encumbered, or was that like, would we be starting from scratch with that process in the future?
Those funds are still encumbered, so we still have, it's still an open contract. We have made a few payments on it for the deliverables that we have received, but the remainder of it remains on hold.
And I just had one comment, I guess. You know, we are seeing the revenue is projected to be down from the assessment and kind of tying in with all the efforts on State Street to keep businesses alive and kind of returning to form, hopefully here in the not-too-distant future. I just wanted to raise the item. I'm not going to comment on it. It's going to Planning Commission tonight or today, but there's an ordinance that will add new burdens to existing businesses. It's not, I don't know how many will be impacted in the assessment area. But I thought it was worth noting that that seems somewhat similar to what we're trying to do with these businesses. So it's just raise that for anyone interested in those proposed regulations that are pretty blunt in application.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Any other questions of staff regarding the report? Seeing no cameras turn on, we'll first move to public comment, and then afterwards, we will seek to entertain a motion. So, Ms. Clark, at this time, I'm going to open up public comment for this item.
Okay, and I don't see any hands raised. No public comment on this item.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll close public comment on this agenda item and move to seek a motion for this port to be, or the draft PBIA structure, fee structure to be forward to the council. Mr. Newkirk. Can't hear you.
All right. I move that we recommend City Council approve the draft annual report and the status quo assessment for fiscal year 2022.
All right, we have a first. Do we have a second? Mr. France has a second motion. Thank you. At this time, do we have any comments or questions regarding the motion? Okay, seeing no cameras turn on or comments, we will move to the roll call, please.
Ruben Zerate.
Aye.
Ed France.
Aye.
Matt Labrie.
Aye.
Andrew Newkirk.
Yes.
Barbara Silver.
Yes.
And Chair Penner.
Chair votes yes. Thank you all. The motion carries, and we look forward to that going forward to council in a few weeks. Okay, we will move on to our report and information regarding our parking lot automation process. Again, Ms. Clark, you're on.
All right. On again. Can't get enough. Okay, so we wanted to give you guys a quick update on our efforts, of course, at Lot Automation. This is a big effort that we have underway and that we've been, we've been working away on. As you'll recall, this project is actually sort of two sub-projects. So there's the LPR project that we've talked at length about and that this committee recommended that we receive funding for, that we fund. But there's also the SkiData version 14 upgrades project, which is sort of the first little piece of all of this. And so if you'll recall, that was a project to update our version of revenue control software to a new, the most recent version, to update our operating systems on our computers out there in the kiosks and to offer new touchless payment options for our customers. So the PCI-compliant EMV chip card readers that would be going into the columns, as well as an online mobile payment option, where you have the sweb mobile. You can scan a QR code and use that to pay for your parking. And the touchless near-field communication type payments, so like Apple Pay, Google Pay, et cetera. So I wanted to give you an update on that portion of the project, and so Roy Forni and Deon Tate are going to give the presentation today.
Hello, good morning, Chair Penner, committee members. Roy Forni, Parking Supervisor. Just wanted to talk a little bit about our upcoming activation and testing of our expanded payment options. I know that Sarah just had a chance to discuss that. It's going to be starting this Monday, so this Monday, May 17th, we are going to be turning all the items on and then proceeding with testing. I'd also like to walk you through what our customer experience is going to look like at our exit columns when our customers pay with these different payment options at the. when our customers pay with these different payment options at the columns. So with the slide here, you're going to see our touchless payment options, which will be our Google Pay, Samsung Pay and Apple Pay. This is one of our payment options where you're not going to have to, it's not going to require physical contact. It is, it uses near filled technology, which uses your phone to simply go to our columns and, and pay for parking, which is going to be nice. Next slide, please. So here you're going to see our EMV compliant credit card readers. This is, is an upgrade. We are now becoming PCI compliant with these readers, which is nice, which is going to make sure that we prevent security breaches. As well as just again, being up to speed. And then like Sarah was mentioning, our Sweb mobile pay, which is a, a very nice feature that we're going to have for our customers. As you can see to the right on the slide here, our entrance tickets will have the QR code that is, is burned on to the ticket itself. Our customers will be able to enter the parking lots, you know, do, conduct their business as they, as they need. They'll return to their vehicles and be able to scan their QR code with their phone and then make payment on the payment platform, which, which is going to be very nice. Next slide, please. So just to, to go over, we're going to talk about the customer service experience. Here, you're going to see on this slide, our customers are going to be able to, when they exit the parking lot, they enter their entrance ticket into the column here, right there, as you see a circled on the screen. If a customer had used the mobile, the Sweb mobile pay, the gate would go up because their payment was already taken care of. If not, they're going to have other options to pay and you'll see on the next slide, please. So they're going to enter their entrance ticket into the column. Their fee is going to display on the screen you see here. When their fee is displayed there, they're going to give, be given multiple options to pay. Next slide, please. Here on the new readers that you see, you're, you're going to see our screen that uses near field communication. That is again, for those touchless payment options, Apple Pay, Google Pay, Samsung Pay. They're going to hold that phone near the, the second screen that you see here. Payment will be processed, the gate will go up. Below that screen, you're going to see our EMV reader. This is that new chip reader. Looks very similar to what you would see at a gas station. What they'll do is again, their fee is going to display, they're going to enter their credit card or a smart card into this EMV reader, Visa, Mastercard or Discover. Their payment will be processed after a couple of seconds. And the gate will go up and they'll be provided a receipt. Next slide, please. So for whatever reason, if our customers have any issues with the transaction, insert the wrong ticket, maybe an old ticket that they had. They can simply press the cancel button. And of course, if there's any other issues, especially when we do go fully automated, there is a help and assistance button there on the left that they could press where they'll be given an opportunity to speak to one of us here in the office. And then we can help provide whatever information they need to get out of the parking lot. Next slide. So one of the new things that has come up and it's not a payment option, but we did install new HID permit readers. There's one upon entrance as well, as well as one upon exit. Our customers that do have permits are now going to use this HID reader that you see here on the slide to simply bring their permit to the reader scan and be able to enter and exit. Of course, once we install and are fully operated with our LPR, we can just whitelist those permits and they should be able to enter and exit freely from there. Next slide. So we just have all the options here that we've just discussed. At this point, just pretty much concluding this presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Forney. I do have a few questions and I'm sure other people, the committee will leave this screen up because it helps kind of us talk about all the things. So I have about three questions. I'm going to start with this web process. Is, is it time sensitive to when I swep process? So if I were to come into a lot, I get my ticket. Do I need to scan my ticket just before I exit? Or is it, once I scan my ticket anytime before I leave? Once I insert my ticket, then it knows the time and, and puts the fee to the charge? Does that question make sense?
It does make sense. And so what would happen is the, the payment platform and, and using our rate management system. So to answer the question, the customer would have to do it right before they exit and not necessarily too much sooner. They'd be given about 15, 10 to 15 minutes to exit the parking lot. If they pay too soon, and then like you said, they exit, you know, two hours later, it realized that there were fees that were not paid for and then not, it, it, those fees would, would pop up on the screen. So.
So my question to that is how we, how are we communicating that to people to know? To swep the timing. So are we letting them know, please use that system 15 minutes before? How are we informing them of that?
Yeah. So, so the, the plan right now and part of the outreach is, is to have that information upon entrance. When our customers enter the parking lot as well as around the parking lots on straddle signs and that kind of thing. So it is going to be a lot of education. There's, you know, again, that's why we have our operators still out in the parking lot. So if anyone has those questions, they could be answered. But yes, there will be directions stating that they need to process that right before.
So we're going to work on communicating that mostly signage and whatnot. Okay.
Correct.
Can it, I don't know how much information can go on the ticket, but that's something to maybe think about if it's something on the ticket, you know, then it tells you.
Yes. And I think the mobile platform itself should state that as well. We'll have directions on there. That needs to be done right before.
To a couple of questions, and this is a silly one, but I know it's an issue in, in parking lots. When you, the, the insertion of your ticket into the reader, does it matter which way it's up or down? Does it read it either way?
Right now it reads both. So whether you put it up or down, it will read. I believe all of our columns are up to date on, on having the ability to read both sides.
So just a suggestion is that I don't know if it makes sense to indicate that. Okay. You know, basically, okay, ticket reads either direction because I know people sometimes will sit there and they're, they're reading, they're looking for instructions. What to do with my ticket? And they're, so you know, an extra five seconds of reading, everybody reading, which way do I insert my ticket is just a delay. So letting them know that they can insert it either direction is helpful, I believe. Two other questions. One is the prepaid parking cards that we have. Do those, will they work the same way as a permit? Can they be read or are they inserted like a credit card? How they, how they being handled?
Yeah, great question. Um, yes. So with the prepaid card, you would need a ticket associated to, well, actually the LPR would, would be able to set. But yeah, typically you need a ticket associated for the processing of that payment, right? So you would have to insert your entrance ticket, a fee would have to come up. It uses that ticket number to understand that that's what's being paid for. So you would just use the prepaid card on the HID reader that you see on the screen and then payment would be processed.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I understand the process is the same, meaning you've got to read your ticket to know how much is going to be deducted from your card.
Correct.
But the HID reader will read that card as well. So again, I don't know if that's information to be put somewhere. So when people come up and go, oh, what do I do with my prepaid card? They might need a tutoring for that information. And last question for me is I roll up there. I don't have my credit card. I don't have my prepaid card. I don't have my perma card. All I have is cash. What's going to happen at that point?
That is also a great question. As of right now, with our staff still on site.
They're going to.
Be able to accept cash payment for now. Uh, yeah, once we do go automated, that, that would be a different story and that's where we're looking in the billing system.
Well, if I recall with the LPR, we have the ability to then have that fee billed to them through that, a process that we were looking into through sending them a, 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 a charge.
Correct.
As opposed to, so we, I know we have a way of doing it. I'm just assuming, letting everyone know sort of the public who's listening right now, if you were to come up to that. Now we still have staff at every kiosk. So that will still be able to be handled in this moment. So I just want to let the public know that that's not going to be an issue at this, or I don't see it as an issue ever, but it's not going to be a problem till we get the new system completely up and running. Well, thank you. That's, that's my main questions. I want to open it to the other committee. I, I guess I just want to also say it's going to take some time and it's going to take some communication and most people are going to see the staff person still in the kiosk and say, I just want to go do what I usually do and go up there. So again, all this, some additional signage, temporary signage that's, you know, letting people know that the system is there for them. And the more we can educate, I think the smoother we'll, we'll get through the changeover. So. And I also recognize this is a big deal, a lot of work. And I want to thank you in advance for the level of effort that this is taking. This is a, you know, I think we thought it was a big change when we changed one thing on, on the reader system. And now we're changing multiple things. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And the team's very excited for all the new, you know, payment options. I think it's going to really assist our customers with having multiple ways. So very excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Forney. Do we have other members of the committee with questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I just want to ask Deon Tate to join us. He's going to give us just another really quick update on the installation of our LPR equipment.
Oh, okay.
And then we can get all the questions together.
Didn't finish the report before I got excited.
It's okay. There's a lot, there's a lot to take in here. So.
Mr. Tate, give us more stuff to absorb.
Good morning. Roy pretty much covered most of it. Just briefly, it's going on schedule, projects on schedule. We've installed 43 detector loops, a lot of trenching and cabling. The new PCI compliant credit card terminals are all installed, ready to be tested next week. Then we'll be moving forward with LPR camera installations. That'll be starting, actually has started. We've got a few of them in directional boring. Couple of lots will need to do some directional boring and network switches, servers, that sort of stuff. And on schedule, on schedule will be done by September, possibly a little bit earlier if everything goes well. I cannot hear you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Tate. I will express my appreciation to you as well. And share it amongst all the folks that are involved with this process. It's, it's a big undertaking. And we're excited about it too. We think it's going to be great. But we really appreciate the effort that's gone into the forethought. And you handling all those physical issues of a construction nature to get that put in is a lot. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there anything else from staff on presentation wise?
Sure. Just want to make sure that you guys are aware and the public is aware that like Deon said, those cameras are starting to be installed with lots. So you'll see them going in around downtown at the entrances and exits of our parking lots. However, they are not going to be turned on just yet. So we're not going to do that until the system goes live and that installation is completed. So just want to give everybody a heads up as you start to see those cameras. Just know that those aren't operational yet at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I'm going to open up to the committee for questions and comments for staff. And then following that, we'll do public comment. All right. Well, we have a quiet committee this morning.
No, no, no. I wanted to ask a question.
Hey, Ms. Silver, can you turn on your camera, please? That's the only way I can tell if someone's.
Is it, is, there we go. Okay. I've been having problems with this. So I know that we asked before about the, being able to preserve the different rates for people with permits for the sorry, the, the disabled parking permits. They're either license plates or they're blue placards. And we were wondering if that was, if special rates were going to be preserved and I knew that you were working on it. Or going to work on it.
Thank you, Committee Member Silver. Yes. So we are still looking into that. So as of right now, yes, that answer is yes, we have our staff out there. We're still going to be able to provide that validation. What we do know is moving towards an automated system, the, the, the way of validating is going to change. So we are pretty optimistic, at least right now, in terms of what we've learned from Ski Data, which is that company that, that, that we utilize for our parking management system to be able to send stuff to the column. So now it's more of like a procedural type of thing of exactly how we would do that, which is a little bit more difficult. So we're still evaluating and we'll continue to evaluate and let you know when there's changes that come up.
Thanks a lot.
No problem.
And as a follow-up, Mr. Forney, at this point, again, there's still a staff member at the kiosk. So that won't change from the ability for someone to do the recognition of a blue placard situation where they would get the discounted rates.
Yes, sir. So that, that transitional period is extremely important for the education of the customer and us to be able to make sure that all the bugs are, are taken care of and will keep somebody in the kiosk until, till, till we're ready.
Till we're ready. Yeah, thank you. All right. Any other members of the committee with questions or comments? Okay, seeing none at this moment, I will go ahead and ask Ms. Clark to open up, or I'm going to open up public comment at this time. And I'll ask Ms. Clark to let me know if there's any members of the public wishing to comment.
Okay, Mr. Penner, I do not see any hands raised right now. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, go ahead and use that raise your hand button in the go to webinar control panel. And it doesn't look like we have any public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clark. So I will go ahead and close public comment at this time. And thanks staff in, in total for the work on this and the efforts made. And we're excited to see this. I do have a, maybe one other question with, with regard to this Monday. Is it all lots or is there specific lots?
So Chair Penner, yes, I, I believe the way it's going to work is they're going to turn them on lot by lot. And then, but yes, once they're turned on, that, that, that training process will go from there. Mr. Tate, Deon, do you have more to say on that?
You're on mute now, Mr. Tate.
Sorry about that. Yeah, they are all installed and we will be testing all of them. It will be a process where we go through to do that.
Do we know where the ribbon cutting is? Where are we going to start?
No, there's no ribbon cutting. This is a, a testing procedure. So.
I don't mean ribbon cutting. Where, what, which lot do I get to go to first is what I'm asking. The go play with it.
I don't want to answer that yet. We don't know. We'll, uh, all right. We'll see you next week.
Very well. I, I appreciate that. All right. Well, thank you, staff on that. And with that information, we will close or move from this agenda item and on to the next agenda, which is program updates.
All right. So I just want to give everybody a few updates on what's going on, particularly in the State Street promenade. First off, the State Street Advisory Committee, the application period is still open. That doesn't close until May 20th. So if. So if anybody here is interested in applying to serve on that committee and you haven't already, be sure to get your application in. That does close on May 20th. Couple of other things. First off, West Victoria, we are opening, reopening the 000 block of West Victoria in one direction eastbound. So there will be one-way eastbound traffic on West Victoria. The existing dining enclosures that are out on that street are going to remain for this time. And the traffic is kind of going to go around them. So just letting you know, be looking for that traffic pattern to change this week. On May 25th, we are going back to city council with seeking direction and recommendations to publish updated guidelines for both the parklet programs citywide on the streets and the expanded dining program on State Street for the remainder of the duration of the council's emergency economic recovery ordinance. As you'll recall, council has extended that through March of 2022. So we're looking for direction from council on how we might want to evolve those outdoor businesses, those outdoor business operations in the interim. So among the changes that we are proposing, we're going to be discussing some of the aesthetic guidelines that we have worked in consort with the Historic Landmarks Commission and the, excuse me, local chapter of the American Institute of Architects to develop and sort of how we're going to begin applying those to some of our pre-existing business enclosures and parklets. And we're also going to be looking for some direction to scale back operations on the sidewalk as businesses are allowed to further reopen with the hopes that by the time we get to 100% reopening, we'll be able to clear off the sidewalks on State Street of everything except for patio dining that was previously approved. So we want to just sort of evolve that and to improve access down the sidewalks. And that's all going to be discussed at city council on May 25th. Additionally, we continue our enforcement efforts on State Street to make sure that, you know, we're trying to get compliance from the businesses that are out there already, making sure that again sidewalks are being kept clear, that accessibility into those enclosures is being maintained and that the guidelines are being adhered to. So staff continues to work on those efforts. And we appreciate the cooperation of the businesses as we move along with that. And finally, we've got some new planters that were installed this past week, I believe. Or either that or they're about to be installed. But those intersections that we still had outstanding at De La Guera, at Correo, and then West Victoria and Chapala, you'll see the K-Rail replaced by those more decorative planters. So that's all I have. That's what's going on at the promenade right now. So if anybody has any questions, happy to take those.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I do have one question. I received a couple of comments about in the 500 block, the lack of path of travel down the middle, that the parklet areas have become very, and I don't know if there's been any discussion or if that's been feedback that staff has received or just wanted to raise that that it's come to my attention. Any feedback on that?
Sure. So when the expanded dining was originally allowed on State Street, we worked closely with the fire department to determine what the access lane was going, what sort of access lane was going to be needed down the street for their vehicles to travel through. And they agreed to a 14 and a half foot wide access lane. And they actually did walk the street with us at that point and determine how far out the various businesses could come and made sure that their vehicles could still pass through. Obviously, things continue to change and evolve. And this is a very high priority for us, obviously, to maintain that access. We actually have another walkthrough scheduled with the fire department likely for next week to just go back through and make sure that we are continuing to maintain an accessible travel lane for their vehicles and make sure that everything can get through. So that is something that we are continuing to pay attention to and will be revisiting very shortly.
Thank you. I think with the activities, you know, the 500 block has a lot of food establishments and drinking establishments. And so I think it's easy to start seeing those things keep expanding and expanding, especially as we had, based on our revenues, we had increased activity on State Street. And that was probably one of the heavily activated areas. So just want to bring the attention that there might be a need for more forceful delineation of that path of travel for people. So.
Thank you very much.
Do I have any questions or comments from the committee on item number nine for staff? Ms. Silver?
Yes, in the draft guidelines that are going to council, will that be emphasized? The need for a clear path of travel on the sidewalks because that has been a concern.
Certainly. So the recommendation that we are taking forward is that we do an immediate change to widen the path of travel. Currently it's six feet on State Street, widen that out to eight feet. Of course, enforcing that, you know, remains a priority for us, but also it can be a little difficult. You know, dining things tend to creep, people pull chairs up, you know, things move around. And so, you know, we're doing our best to stay on top of that. But we do believe that by widening that out, we can guarantee a wider and better path of travel. First phase would be sort of widen that out to eight feet. And then once indoor dining reopens at 100% capacity, then we would plan to ask that, like I said, all of the sidewalk dining that wasn't part of a previously existing permitted outdoor dining operation, that that be removed. If we just go back to the way the State Street sidewalks were prior to the pandemic. So we'd be keeping the on-street expansions of outdoor dining in order to enable those businesses to continue to recover for the duration of the emergency ordinance. But we would be widening the path of travel on State Street and restoring those sidewalks to the way they were before so that we can again improve that access.
Will that be clear in the guidelines that that is changing? Because when we talk about creep on the sidewalks, it really does creep. So the access becomes impossible for some people.
Right. So, you know, it's pretty clear, I believe, in the guidelines right now. We'll be making it clear, obviously, going forward that that is the change. And whenever we make changes to the guidelines, we do do another round of outreach on State Street to the businesses. We hand out flyers, we hand out updated guidelines. We go and we talk to the businesses and try to make sure that they're aware of things that have changed. So, you know, that will be an ongoing effort along with the remainder of our enforcement. But we will be doing targeted outreach to make sure that all the businesses are aware of those changes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Newkirk, I had seen your camera come on. Did you have a question?
I just had a comment. I meant to say last month, we kind of ran out of time on this item, that I just think you guys did an awesome job on State Street. And I think as we come out of the pandemic, you know, I was down there over the weekend and it's like, I think it's just going to be really popular moving forward. And, you know, there's been bumps, but I think along the way, but I think staff as a whole, the city has done an awesome job kind of moving, evolving this thing along. And I think like, you know, I started to hear some creeping like Monday morning quarterbacking on some of the efforts that we've undertaken as a city. And I think it's all pretty silly. And I just think you guys should know that a lot of people certainly may think what's been done has really been awesome and how nimble the city has been. So I just wanted to pass that comment along.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And certainly our goal in this emergency was to respond with appropriate urgency to make sure that we could continue to guarantee the health of the community going forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Newkirk. And I know it wasn't stated as a motion, but I'll second that motion. Mr. France?
I'll fair that motion.
Right.
Thank you so much for the update. And Ms. Clark, my one question, just coming back to Victoria Street, is just how you all are handling the, having the eastbound traffic with parklets on both sides?
Right. So unfortunately, I don't have a diagram for you today, but basically the traffic is going to kind of snake through the parklets. And there'll be K-Rail out there to make sure that, you know, we keep everything safe and avoid, you know, any sorts of collisions. So the traffic engineer has reviewed that and has worked on it to determine what a good path of travel will be. At this point, we're leaving, we're going to institute no parking on the northern part of Victoria Street that remains open, just to provide a little bit of extra space for cars and maneuverability and to not have, you know, vehicles trying to stop and maneuver into parking spaces and preserve that traffic flow. So, you know, safety is top of mind and this is something that was developed by the traffic engineer.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the committees on program updates? Okay, see none. That just brings us to item 10, which is announcements. And I'm not, oh.
Mr. Chair, a public comment. So if anybody wishes to make public comment, go ahead and use the raise your hand button. We don't have very many attendees today, so it doesn't look like there's any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. You always can. I always figure by the time I get to program, we're done with that. But you are reminding me, since we can't physically see everyone packing the chambers, the DPC meeting room, it's hard for me to tell. So thank you. All right. And any other announcements?
We don't have any other announcements at this time.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for committee's participation this morning and staff's participation as we move into our summer here. And it appears to be an improvement of activity for our businesses. We're excited about that. It's been survival mode for sure for the last, you know, 15 months. And look forward to the next year being in a more positive direction. So we thank everybody for their efforts and their continued efforts in this matter. And with that, we'll stand adjourned until our next meeting in June. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chair Penner and staff.
Thank you all.